Okay, it's seven o'clock. I think we can go ahead and get started. We'll reconvene back to regular session and Evelyn, if you could start us with the roll call.
Trustee Lee.
Here.
Trustee King is absent. Trustee Marcus.
Here.
Vice President Weekly.
President.
President Walsh.
Here. So 4.2, a report out on closed session from today, March 26th. We had two items. We received information and no action was taken. All right, now, good evening. Welcome to our March 26, 2025 meeting of the Redwood City School District Governing Board. Bienvenidos a todos ustedes. Si requieren interpretación en español, por favor llama al 978 990 5137 y presione 8377041 y el signo de número. Si asiste a la reunión en persona, solicita un informe situado al fondo de la sala. Again, welcome, all members of the public. Your partners in education and the board encourages you to participate and provide comments on issues of concern, regardless of whether they are on the agenda. To speak, please complete a speaker's card online, or if you're here in person, you'll find them available at the entrance and you can complete them and hand them to Evelyn. If you're addressing a subject listed on the agenda, we'll call you when that item is being considered. But if the issue's not on the agenda, you'll be called shortly during the oral communications agenda item. And then, to be fair to all speakers, we do limit public comments to three minutes per person per topic unless otherwise noted. With that, we're on to changes to the agenda. Does anyone have any changes, modifications? Perfect, then we can move on to approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, and then now we will move on to oral communication. Did we get any speakers cards in person? Perfect. These are for oral communication and.
Yep.
Oral communication, okay. So our first speaker is Jose Talavera. Then there's, yeah, the microphones there, the buttons kind of like the person that, and if the red light comes on, yeah, perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Jose Talavera. I'm the Associate Director of Advocacy for KIP NorCal, or KIP Public Schools, Northern California. We want to thank the district for clarifying that KIP Excellencia will be included in the facility master plan. We're grateful for your partnership and look forward to engaging our school community in the process of gathering feedback for improvements needed in our campus. We need to help, we will help to distribute the survey to our families so they have a chance to provide their input. We thank you, to all of you, for designing a process that prioritized the parent participation. And thank you for your time. We're looking forward to collaborate.
Thank you, Jose. Our next speaker is, I'm not sure about the first name, but it's Johnson is last name. Yeah, sorry, sorry, I couldn't see your first name.
All right, so we're live. Good evening, trustees, Superintendent Dr. Baker and staff. My name is Demis Johnson III, and I serve as the Associate Director for External Affairs at Rocketship Public Schools. Just wanted to bring you greetings and salutations from Rocketship Redwood City. We are super excited to be partnering with you and your staff members. Want to show a special appreciation to Mr. Martin Cervantes and Mr. Rick Edson for their partnership at Rocketship Redwood City. Also wanted to extend an invite to all of the trustees, as well as to Dr. Baker, to come and tour the school and see some of the wonderful things that we have going on at 909 Roosevelt Ave. And that is all that I have for you tonight, and I look forward to your continued partnership. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Demis. Let me make sure there's none online. That's for an agenda item and agenda item. Okay, perfect. Then we can move on to school and community reports. We're gonna have Clifford do their school presentation for the 2425 school year.
The song, yeah. Okay. Okay, so thank you. My name is Christy Jackson. I'm the principal at Clifford School. I also have our Assistant Principal Casey Noski here, who's gonna be presenting with me this evening. First, I'd just like to start with some appreciation. So I'd like to appreciate the trustees, I'd like to appreciate Dr. Baker and the district administration for having us here tonight to do our presentation, also for all of your guidance and support and all that you do for Clifford School. I'd also like to, of course, appreciate our teachers and our staff. I think you can tell they are absolutely amazing. They're really a large part of what makes Clifford such a great place for students to come to learn and also just a great place to work every day. They're so passionate. They care so much about students. They support each other and it's just really special, and so I really want to appreciate them. So thank you all. I'd also like to recognize our parent community and our parent volunteers and our PTO. They do so much to provide enrichment to our students and make sure that all of our students get the programs that they need in order to be successful and to thrive. So I also want to recognize our parent community for all they do for Clifford School. Okay, Wendy, next slide, please. This isn't working. Okay, so you'll see here on the California school dashboard, we're really proud of the growth that we made between last year to the year previous. You know, last year, there were a lot of new things at Clifford. We became a community school last year. We became a Title I school last year, and we had a whole brand-new administration last year. And so we're really proud of the progress that all of us on our team made on the school dashboard. We started last year in ATS, this year in ATSI, due to the past data on the dashboard, but we're happy to report that we are now out of ATSI. So we made a lot of growth in that, in, on the dashboard. In chronic absenteeism, we went from red to yellow. Suspension rate, we went from red to green. EL progress from red to green, ELA progress from orange to green. In math, we actually went down one indicator level, so that's something that we're definitely gonna be working on. And you will see that our red indicators, we still have for chronic absenteeism. We have Asian students, our ELA progress, our English learners and our long-term English learners, and for math, our long-term English learners. So in working on the SIPSA, we're making sure that we are having a plan in place for all of these groups to make sure that our subgroups are making progress next time around. Next slide, please. Okay, so for LCAP goal number one, we're just gonna talk a little bit about how our multi-tiered systems of supports help create an inclusive and supportive environment for all of our students to learn and to thrive. Next slide, please. That's okay. All right, so here you can see for goal number one, our targets and our rates for chronic absenteeism. We, overall, in 2324, we had 19% for students that were chronically absent. Our target was 23%, so we're proud that we met that goal for last school year. For this school year so far, we're kind of on track, but kind of evening out in that area. We did make an ambitious goal for this school year of 16%. I don't think we're gonna reach that target, but we are doing a lot of work and we're putting a lot of energy into helping our students attend school every day. So some of our target groups were on track and met their target goal, and then a few groups, we still need to, you know, give a little bit more support. And we'll be talking more about that when we go into goal one more. Next slide, please. So you can see over the past two years, we've actually made a lot of improvement in chronic absenteeism. For last school year and this school year, we're kind of evening out around 20, 21%. And so some of the factors that we feel are contributing to our chronic absenteeism, some of our families do still struggle with transportation, being that Clifford has such a wide attendance barrier, not attendance barrier, what's one of them? Boundary, attendance boundary, and our students are coming from far away. We have a lot of some students who aren't able to come to school this year because they're medically fragile or their IEPs don't allow them to. But we're doing a lot of work this year around family education, making sure parents understand the importance of attendance and what happens when students miss school. We're also helping them better understand what an excused versus an unexcused absence is, because it seems that there's been some confusion with that. Also, making sure our parents are educated on independent study. We do have several families who like to take trips during the school year. We definitely encourage them not to do that, but if they are going to, we want them working and we want them getting those absences excused. So some of, those are some of the strategies we're using in chronic absenteeism. Next slide. With chronic absenteeism, oh. That's okay. Dolphin?
Dolphin, dolphin intermission.
It's time for your routine. That's okay. All right, so I think, next slide, please. Uh huh. So you'll see here from this graph that several of our student subgroups are consistently making progress in chronic absenteeism. Our chronic absenteeism rate for our English learners, our students with disabilities, our socially economically disadvantaged, our Latinx and our homeless youth are all down as far as chronic absenteeism rates. Again, the groups that we will be focusing on are Asian students, two or more races, and our white students. Next slide, please. Next, having to do with suspensions. Again, we're really proud of the progress that we've made with suspensions. We met our target last school year and we are on target to meet that this year, school year as well. We don't have very many suspensions and we only use suspensions as a last resort. We do a lot of alternatives to suspension. We use a lot of restorative practices. A lot of the time, we use reflection with students. We want them to reflect on their actions and have a growth mind state and learn, learn from their mistakes and reteaching of expectations when necessary. So we have a lot of plans in place and we're doing really well in the area of suspensions. Next slide, please. So you'll see in a comparison from years past, from 2223, we're still making some good gains as far as lowering our suspension rate. It's about even right now from last year to this year. This year so far, we just have three out-of-school suspensions and three in-school suspensions. And again, we only use suspensions as a last resort to establish safety for our students or our community. But we are doing a lot to make sure that we are proactive and providing students with the supports that they need to not get to that point. Next slide, please. And again, with our student groups and suspension rates, we've seen a decrease in our students, our students that are economically disadvantaged, our Latinx students and our homeless students. We've seen a slight increase with our English learners and our white students. And so again, some of these students fall in the same group. So some of it is, you know, applies to more than one student in the data. Next slide, please. So I've already mentioned some, some of what we're doing already to meet our goals for goal number one, but I want to talk a little bit about some particular things that we're proud of. As far as attendance is concerned, what we've really improved this year is the efficiency of our attendance team. We have bi-weekly team meetings that consist of administration, also our community school coordinator and assistant, that they've been a huge support to our attendance, having the fact that we're a community school this year, our office team as well. And we've really stepped it up as far as the amount of outreach that we're doing with our families, whether that be phone calls, visits, meetings, texts on WhatsApp. There's been a real, we've had a real push this year to make sure that when we see students that are struggling, that we're trying to find out what those barriers are, what's going on with those families and what can we do to support them? And we've actually, you know, been able to help a lot of families kind of find ways that they could get to school more often. So we're really proud of the work that we've done there. We've also tried to really increase our families' understanding of the importance of attendance, and not only our attendance team, but we even have our teachers. Our teachers are reaching out to families, letting them know how their tardies or their lack of attendance is affecting their learning, talking with them during conferences, Miss Chilton during conferences, attending conferences with teachers to talk to parents about the importance of school attendance. We're also presenting this to parents at back-to-school night in any opportunity that we have with families that are on our campus to make sure we address the importance of good attendance. PBIS is also important in helping our students reach our goals for goal number one. We do have a very robust program at Clifford for PBIS. We have a, yes.
Members of the public may not be familiar with PBIS.
Yeah, PBIS is Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports. It's a way that we set up a system of very clear expectations for our students so that they can be successful in school. So they know exactly where they are and whatever area of the school that they go to, they know what's expected of them, and it, you know, allows them to be successful and it prevents us from having to redirect them as much. Part, a big part of PBIS is acknowledgement. So having an acknowledgement system where we very frequently acknowledge when they're doing the right thing. We actually had some visitors come from Opportunity School that did some observations of our middle school, and they said across the district, we had a very positive rate of positive feedback to students versus redirection. And so they were very impressed with that and we're very proud of what our teachers are doing in this area. Our PBIS team is attending training now at the county office, and we make it fun for the kids. We have our student store, we use live school and middle school. We have our dolphin dollars, which is, we've kind of improved those and made them more fun this year. And at Screen Team, we are always discussing students and we're always trying to figure out what we can do to support them if they're struggling in any of these areas. As far as SEL, which is Socially Emotional Learning, we did begin a character trait program this year. Every month, we celebrate a different character trait. All month long, teachers are doing lesson with, lessons with their students, having to do with that character trait, reading them books, showing them videos, doing activities or doing writing, reflecting on how they can use that character trait. We've also implemented monthly dolphin award assemblies. And at those assemblies, we talk about the character trait of the month. We give out our dolphin awards. Every teacher gives a dolphin award to one of their students based on the character trait. We're also started giving out attendance awards. So we have a little bit of competition. Competition's kind of fun, right? You know, the different grade level spans that have the best attendance rate for each month receives an attendance award, and we present that at the assembly. And also, they get one extra recess and a little treat, so the kids really like that. And then for Socially Emotional Learning, you know, we have our parents who volunteer to do Project Cornerstone in every classroom once a month, so that's one SEL program. Our middle school is still using Character Strong. We're looking into maybe expanding that to the elementary school next year. And we have a great mental health team. We have one life counselors and a fabulous head mental health counselor, and a lot of our students are able to get the support that they need. As far as enrichment, I think this is important when we're looking at our goals for goal one, because these enrichment programs like music and art and drama and clubs and after-school classes and sports, these are some things that some of our students are really motivated by. It's what excites them about coming to school. It's what they feel passionate about. It's something that they feel good about and they feel really interested in. And the fact that we're able to offer that to all of our students is important because, you know, other than the learning that's happening in the classroom every day, school should really provide a well-rounded environment for them to thrive. And you can't forget our new Dungeons and Dragons Club, which our librarian is doing this year, and that is pretty awesome. So the kids are really enjoying that. Next slide, please. You can see in some of these pictures are just some of the things I was talking about. We have our students holding up their dolphin awards, TK through eight. They're all super excited about it. We have had art at the public library almost every month. We have wonderful parent volunteers for Art in Action, and they put displays in the public library for us. We have Frozen Junior this year, some recitals for kindergarten. Our wonderful kindergarten teachers plan to recital. They're doing another one in the spring. Same with our instrumental music teacher. Miss Sun, you know, all of these things just make Clifford kind of a fun, engaging place for our students. And also, something that I wanted to highlight was, last month, we recognized the character trait tolerance during Black History Month, and we did have a special speaker who spoke with our middle school students about hate speech and the importance of respecting each other at school and treating each other with kindness, no matter where you come from or what your background is. And I think these are just great examples of all the great work that we're doing to meet our goals for goal number one. So next, I'm gonna have Ms. Noski come up and talk to you about goal number two. Ms. Noski.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Okay, thank you. I want to also acknowledge my admin partner and mentor. We did not plan the inverse polka dots, but that's just how in sync we are at Clifford. So I'm gonna talk about goal number two, which is really focusing on our English learner population and the progress that they're making on the LCAP, which is the English Language Proficiency Assessment for California, as well as our reclassification rate with that test and our long-term English learners and what's going on with that population at our school. Next slide, okay, great. So in the calendar year or the school year of 2324, we did meet our classification target of 9% of our English learner population did reclassify. And this year, our target's 11%. And we are feeling optimistic that we will reach our new target. Some of the reasons for that optimism are that we had made sure that all our teachers with their English language, their ELD instruction, that they are spending one day a week on practicing for that LCAP exam, getting students familiar with what that looks like, getting onto the computers and understanding the interface. We had some really good practice sessions that were provided to us from the district. We're in our first year of really using Language Power, the curriculum for our ELD instruction with fidelity, and those are some of the reasons why we feel confident about meeting that reclassification target for this year. Next slide. Another thing that we are looking at with our data is making sure that we are making that goal of one level of growth for every English learner per year. That helps prevent having those long-term English learners. So moving from a level one to a level two to a level three and then to that level four, that reclassification level. And all that second grade did improve by one level last year. So that's something definitely to celebrate at our school. Next slide, please. So this is our long-term English learner. And being a middle school, we're gonna have more long-term English learners because that requires being classified as an English learner for five or more years. And we have taken a lot of different approaches on how to help lower that number and to help those students reclassify. One thing we did this year is really spoke with our students about the importance of the LCAP test and helping them understand the reason why they were taking that, how that might impact their high school career and their options for classes at that point. And it was really interesting in talking to students prior to the testing that we had take place in February this year. And students, as I'm walking in the hallways and talking to them, they're like, I got it, Ms. Noski. I, I'm gonna try really, really hard. I'm gonna do my very best. I'm like, that's amazing. That's all we can ask. So I just think helping set the mindset for students about the importance of the test and their role in truly doing their best with that all year in the preparation with their direct and indirect instruction. Currently, we have 19 students who classify as long-term English learners, with 14 of those being students with disabilities. So that creates another situation for our campus as we look at our long-term English learners. Last year, we were able to duly classify some of our students if they met the parameters set by the state. However, the state changed those rules this summer and students can no longer duly classify. What is happening now and that we're focusing on to help meet this goal of reducing the number of our long-term English learners is we are trying to identify those students with disabilities and where their disability might qualify them for an exemption for one of the subtests. So there's reading, speaking, writing, and listening. For example, we have a student in our SLC classroom and part of their disability is they have a very severe speech impediment. So because of that, they are hard to understand. They're not going to most likely be able to pass the speaking portion and therefore may not be able to reclassify. By understanding that this disability is preventing them from that reclassification, we can exempt them from that one subtest. So this is something we're working hard with, with all of our special education team to identify students that might fall into these parameters outlined by the state. This year, we currently have 26 students who are at risk of becoming long-term English learners, with 12 of those also being students with disabilities. So again, this is an area of working with those students, the importance of the test, preparing, how it impacts their high school career, especially our eighth graders this year, and then working on trying to make sure we're supporting our students in the right way with possibly having a subtest exemption. Next slide, please. So some of the areas where we are providing programs, services, and different actions, our Language Power program, we had professional development for our teachers this year with that, really rolling out that program with fidelity. We've had really good response from our teachers about the professional development they received, about the program itself. To have a curriculum, a curriculum that is leveled by where they are. It's not a one-size-fits-all. It's really meeting students where they are in their process of English language development. And the students are enjoying the, the books that come with it, the readers. They're excited. They're being given this opportunity in a small group environment to shine as they're trying to improve those language skills. We have a pretty diverse population at our school. And so unlike maybe some schools, some of our classes only have three, four, maybe six English learners in the classroom. And of those students who are in the classroom, they might represent level one, two, and three. So that's really challenging for a teacher on how to meet all those needs of those English learners and the other needs of their diverse population in their classroom. So our teachers are very creative and they've worked hard to create groupings at a lot of our grade levels to make sure that students are kind of moving at the same time to be able to receive specialized instruction that's really targeting their level and their needs. In fact, one of our third-grade teachers who is here tonight was just highlighted in the superintendent's update last week and really showcased her feelings about this new program and how excited she is and the kids are and, and how this new look at how to support our English learners at our campus is something to really celebrate and to help them move forward in their educational journey. Some other additional supports that we have for our English learners are our reading interventionists, as well as another teacher. We're really focusing on those students in our English learner population. And when they're receiving that reading intervention, they're also receiving additional ELD support at that time. We have community programs and outreach. This year, Michelle Redmond, who is here, shout out Michelle Redmond. She led a series of three culturally responsive practices, professional development for our entire staff. And that also was really well-received. Some of the ways that we are using that is, for example, in our family center, understanding that that population doesn't use a lot of email or even texting the way most of us do. And that's whereas Ms. Jackson mentioned, we're using the WhatsApp, a system that they're using because that's familiar to them, how they're connecting with families in other countries. And so we're using what they're using to reach out to them. And we've had really great success with that. And we've had really great success with that, and that's been really exciting. We, the LPAC practice sessions that I talked about, our community center, our teachers, they were sharing this with our families. And families are like, we want to be doing some of this practice at home, but we don't have the technology. So we worked together and we loaned out the technology for those grade levels that don't normally take that technology home to support them with that practice. Next slide, please. So here are some more pictures that kind of highlight things that represent our LPAC goal number two. We have our multicultural night. This was our second year. It's a really fun event that started. It's for our entire community. And it's a potluck and people bring things that represent their own culture. We have had a couple of different fundraisers through our PTO that's really supporting our socially, economically disadvantaged students. For example, the gingerbread run was something new. We have some teachers here who ran in the pouring rain. But all the money and proceeds from that went directly to our family center to again help support our families and the needs that they have. We also had a movie night sponsored by our PTO. And all of those funds went to support our after-school enrichment scholarships because we are trying to make sure there are no barriers, no financial barriers to any of our students being able to have access to those enriching after-school activities. We have a dolphin boutique. You can see kids shopping, families are shopping. These are gently used clothing that are clean and people can take what they want and there's no charge for any of that. And we have a picture of our ELAC meeting, our English Language Advisory Council Group with our parents and staff. And again, we're using that WhatsApp. We've had much better rate of participation. And in talking about culturally responsive practices with Michelle Redmond, we've really changed the format. We're starting with an icebreaker. We're getting people moving. We're having members from our own staff, as well as from the district staff, who are multilingual learners themselves, speak about their experience and their experience in school. We're just trying to connect with our community on a deeper level to help support and to help people feel safe to ask for the things that they need so that we can support all our students at Clifford. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Ms. Jackson.
Thank you, Casey. Just really great, the partnership that I've had with Casey. Really appreciate it and that was great. So, okay, goal number three. For goal number three, you know, we'll just be reviewing, you know, our student progress and how they're doing with their progress in ELA and math. You can see some targets that we've set for ourselves for this school year. We already know that we've I-Ready since we just had our spring I-Ready that we were very, are very close. We have a few students still finishing up, but very close to meeting our goal for I-Ready. And we did meet our goal for math for I-Ready for the spring, so that's very exciting. And we're putting all in on the CASP this year. We're doing a lot of preparation and planning for that. So we are optimistic that we will be able to meet those targets as well. Next slide, please. So this first slide shows a yearly comparison of how our students are performing, which students are on or above grade level in ELA on the SBACK test. We're kind of steady here at about 50% of our students that are at or above grade level on the ELA portion. So just kind of, you know, this is something that we're going to continually work on. We definitely want to see a little bit more growth and rather than staying kind of steady. On the school dashboard, we actually did move up an indicator in ELA. And so when I asked about that, I found out, next slide, please, that that had to do with how much closer we are getting to, our students are getting to meeting standard. So the 22, 23 school year, we were 5.9 points below standard. And then last year, we're 2.6 points. So because we made some progress there, the indicator improved on the school dashboard. So that's positive, but we would still like to see more students that are performing at or above grade level. And like I said, we have increased CASP practice with students. We did our FIB, the interim assessment for state testing this year, which has helped our students get a better understanding. We did a lot of coaching this year with TCM, Teacher-Created Materials, came in and coached our third through eighth grade team. That was on ELD, but improving English language development for our students is going to help our subgroups perform better on the CASP test. And also another thing that we're continuing to work on is our PLCs. This was something that we brought back this year. And we definitely find it very beneficial and we look forward to doing more next year. And so I think that's really helped us with pinpointing students that are needing an intervention and finding instructional grouping and being very specific when planning instruction for them. Next slide, please. As far as student groups, you'll see that there's still some discrepancies here in the data. Our white students and students of two or more races are performing much higher than our English learners, our socially, economically disadvantaged, and our students with disabilities. So this is a growth area that we definitely want to continue to focus on. You know, for our students with disabilities this year, our special ed team is doing much more intervention with programs like Read 180 and SIPs. And so we're really optimistic that those programs will help improve outcomes for our students with disabilities in the area of foundational skills and reading and reading comprehension. Again, all the work we've done with ELD this year and all the coaching and observations the teachers have participated in, I think are going to help improve for some of these subgroups. And also again, like Casey mentioned, those culturally responsive practice trainings is helping us work with our students better using universal design for learning. And also we have a lot of teachers at our school who are still using Pedagogy of Confidence practices. And that's something that we might not be doing as much with anymore, but that's something that's not going to go away anytime soon because they are very good strategies and they help our students learn and especially, you know, in the area of reading and English language arts. Next slide, please. This next slide shows our student cohorts. So they're the same students over several years from third to eighth grade. You'll see that there are some years like third through fourth, third, fourth, and fifth where students are kind of consistently making the same type of growth. But what we did notice is that there is a little bit of a dip when students transition from fifth grade to sixth grade. And looking more into that, there are some contributing factors possibly. The tests that you receive, the CASP in sixth grade in middle school versus in fifth grade does have, it is more rigorous. It's longer, the questions are longer, the students have to have a little bit more stamina. So I think that's a bit natural and it's in matching with the state average as far as what happens from the transition from elementary school to middle school. So I think that's one of the contributing factors. Also, in sixth grade, the curriculum is very different than it is in fifth grade, a much more computer-based. Students in middle school are asked to be more independent. And that's, sixth grade is a real transition year for them. They're learning a lot of things and it takes time for them to get adjusted. And I think you can see that in seventh grade, many of our groups kind of start to even out and kind of increase once they've kind of gotten their footing there. But we will continue to take a look at how we can improve outcomes for our students moving from fifth to sixth grade. We did some vertical alignment at our last PD day and we'd like to do a little bit more with the fifth and sixth grade teams so that they can understand a little bit better how they can prepare their students for that transition. Next slide, please. As far as I-Ready reading, in the fall, we noticed that the students do come in performing, you know, quite a bit below where we want them to be. I do think the summer is difficult for many of our students. It is a long time for them to be out of school. We don't get too many spaces in summer school because most of those go to the Bayside students. So I think our students could definitely need some more support in the summer at Clifford so that there isn't so much of a summer slide. So you'll see like for the beginning of this school year, we had 39% of our students were at or above grade level. The year before was 41%, the year before 34%. You know, we definitely want to look at what students are on or above, but what's really important for us is growth. We want to make sure that we recognize all of our students are coming to us at a different level with different needs and that we need to celebrate their growth. And so we have made growth. We just took the spring I-Ready and most of our results are in. And we're looking at right now that we are about 54% of students on or above grade level. So we are very close to meeting our target of 56%. And maybe by the time all of our students who've been absent finished, we will get up there. We'll see. Okay, next slide, please. Moving on to math performance, this was on the SBACK. This was one of those areas that we actually went down on the dashboard as far as indicators. So this is definitely something that we are going to be focusing on a lot this year and next year, how we can support our students with math on the CASP test. And, you know, it's not, if you look at this chart, it actually looks like 1% more of our students are met or above standard. But the reason the reporting was on the dashboard is because we didn't move up very many points from being far away from standard as the year previous. And so we kind of maintained. And so since we did not make growth and we kind of maintained, they put us down one level. Some of the things that we're doing to support our students with math. This year, we hired Mathnasium to come to our school after school. We're paying for Mathnasium through PTO and through Title I. We have about 60 students who have been able to receive after-school math intervention with Mathnasium. They go twice a week. We have two sessions. And so that's something we implemented this year to make sure that those students are receiving intervention. And we prioritize, you know, our wonderful MTSS TOSA, Stacy Chilton. She does, she does a lot of work with data and she did a lot of work with our family center to prioritize our unduplicated students and our English learners and those subgroups that are struggling. And some of the students that maybe used to be, you know, recommended for interventions, we really made sure that it was equitable. We really made sure that our students who needed it, who maybe wouldn't have been able to get that intervention on their own, that we prioritize them. So I think that will definitely help support our students, especially the subgroups making some progress there. Our students also really like REFLEX and FRAX, the new math programs for them to do some practice. If you go into a classroom, they're so excited for that. It's really fun. It's really engaging, which is great. You know, because a big part of little kids wanting to do work is if it's fun. And they really enjoy those programs and they're really motivated to use them. So that's been successful this year. Next slide, please. As far as our subgroups, this is very in alignment with what we're seeing for ELA as well, where, you know, the same groups are struggling. We still have our students with disabilities, socially, economically disadvantaged, our English learners and our Latinx populations that are still not performing at the same level as their peers. So we will continually be working on how we can bridge that gap and continue to use some of those strategies that I just mentioned to do so. Next slide, please. Also similar to the ELA data as far as SBACK math, we're still, we're seeing the same type of thing where third through fifth, it's kind of steady, kind of a little bit up and down. But that dip into sixth grade is really a struggle still. And again, I think it's just that the test kind of bumps up in difficulty when they get into middle school. But also I don't know if there's as much cohesion moving from fifth to sixth when it had to do with curriculums in the past. CPM in middle school is very different than what we were using in the elementary grades. Now that we have a new adoption and K8 will be using illustrative math. I think that will help kind of help our students transition into middle school. CPM was a lot of independent work, not a lot of direct instruction. So I think that was maybe a little bit challenging for our students transitioning to middle school. We are getting ready to talk to our parents about the CASP test. We're getting a lot of information out there. We have a principal's coffee on Friday. We'll be discussing the CASP test, how to prepare, some tips for parents, helping them understand when the test is, when it's coming, how to prepare their kids on those days. And a lot of our teams, our teachers are starting to practice with their students, strategies to help them do well on the test. You know, some students don't test well. And there's some things that we can tell them or help them with to make, to kind of, you know, take that barrier away. Next slide, please. As far as I-Ready math, you know, same thing with reading. Our students coming in are not scoring very well as far as being above or on grade level. This school year, we had 24% of our students in August and September, when they took the beginning of the year I-Ready, that were at or above grade level. That's a little bit less than the year before and a little bit more than the year previous. We just did our spring I-Ready and again, we still are waiting for a few results to come in. But as of this morning, we were at 49% and that was our target. So we actually met our target for spring I-Ready, which was 49%. So we're very proud of that. Good job. So just some other program services and things that we're doing to support our students. Tier One Strategies, that's a big push this year, just making sure that we're using the curriculum to fulfill, to fidelity, but that we're teaching the standards, that we're teaching to the standards. We have a fabulous teaching staff and very knowledgeable and very willing to share their ideas. That's one thing that's so special about Clifford is that teachers are very willing to help each other, to help new teachers, to help each other, to go into each other's classrooms and figure out what's working. Again, the UDL and the POC, Pedagogy of Confidence Strategies in Tier One, definitely help our students in our subgroups to be connected and to help them learn. And, you know, practicing the FIB was helpful this year. And just the PLCs really allowed us to take a look at our students, look at the data and make plans for our students. And our teachers found that very beneficial this year and we're really excited about what we can do with that next year now that we've gotten our footing with PLCs again. We have a lot of Tier Two interventions to support progress in ELA and math. We have an amazing reading specialist who not only pulls kids, but also goes into classrooms and models and trains teachers, also our MTSS TOSA. They have gone into classrooms and shown teachers how to use Ufly so that students can increase their foundational skills. We've made kits for all of our teachers with Ufly so that they have those tools. And so when we look at that data, they can go back and they can pick what specific lesson is going to support those students. And I think that's been extremely helpful for our Tier Two interventions. Something also fun that we're doing in third through fifth grade is PeerTeach, which is an opportunity for students to take like a pre-assessment and it scores them. And then they get partnered up with another student who's performing well in that standard and they work together and they're peer tutors. This is also a program like REFLEX and FRAX that the kids love. It's really exciting. It makes it really fun. And it's really nice that they have an opportunity to work with their peers and support in that way. I mentioned a lot of the professional development that we've done so far. Another thing we implemented this year was common planning time for our K through five teachers by having all of their students go to PE together, where in the past they would go on different days or different times. And this allows our grade level teams to work together and plan together and has, have time to collaborate. And supplemental programs. Again, on top of the academics that they're learning in the classroom, a lot of our students enjoy and need hands-on learning. And so we're fortunate to have our PTO support this. But a lot of great programs. Marine Science Institute comes out and works with our K-five teachers. Science for Scientists is coming out the end of this month to work just a STEM day with some of our students. We have a lot of great field trips that we support through the PTO with scholarships and transportation through Measure U, really providing those real-world connections and hands-on experiences for our students. And we have visitors coming in, like Big Buzz About Bees is coming in in a few weeks and the cow came. Everybody liked the cow. We also had a really successful STEAM night that our STEAM TOSA Danielle Schall planned. That was a great turnout. Hundreds of families and kids showed up for STEAM night in collaboration with Raft. And it was great. I mean, the kids really had a good time. They love Makerspace. They love STEAM. All of our students get to participate in STEAM. And we even had projects there that our middle schoolers had made during their STEAM elective for the students to use during the STEAM night. So, that was great to see them giving back in that way. So, yeah, next slide, please. So, here's just an example of some of those things. A lot of STEAM projects, the kids love to share those because they're so fun. We have some pictures of some field trips like to Westminster Woods, some writing in kindergarten for Martin Luther King Junior Day. Our TKers doing all their movement and fun play-based things. And so, all of these things, you know, smiles on kids' faces, this is what really helps. These types of experiences help our kids want to be at school and want to learn. And so, we're really proud and happy that we get to offer that at Clifford School. So, with that, that is the end of our presentation. Thank you so much for listening and thank you for having us.
Thank you, Christine. All right. Thank you, Christine and Casey for your presentation on Clifford. And thanks to your, your teachers and staff that are here tonight. There's others online and the students and family that make up the community. It was great to hear. I'm assuming that people have questions and comments, so I would like to open it up to the trustees.
First off, thank you all for showing up, including staff. It's super helpful to just see the excitement and the energy that you guys bring. I think it's really important, at least for me, I imagine for the trustees, the DICE as well, just to, to really get a sense of where everyone is feeling among the community. Like, we asked for a lot of data, which I know is, you know, a lot. But it's important for us, for me, to tie the data to the narratives as well. So, obviously, the presentation itself is very, very useful, but it's also good to get a sense of the energy. So, thank you all for that, just as a starter. I think, I just want to make sure, because for me, I want to just get a sense of, big thing, and I think we've mentioned this before, like, are we on track? Are we not on track? Just to get a sense of where we are. And I think, and I know we've made a lot of progress over the different presentations on getting there, but I think maybe it's most efficient to give you or to repeat back what I think I've heard and then you can tell me where I've missed things, if that works.
Sure.
Okay. So, I think on, on goal one, what I think I saw was that we're largely on track across all the different pieces. Maybe the one wrinkle is chronic absenteeism, which is a little higher than we'd like, but still fairly good growth compared to past years. And there are some nuances there that have led to complications this year. Is that fair?
Yes.
Okay. Goal two, I think I heard similarly, I think that we're, we feel good and things are still happening. But in terms of what we're seeing, reclassification, LTAL, LPAC growth, we feel pretty good about it. Maybe the one wrinkle that one is with the LTAL piece and some of the nuances, especially with the population, with students with disabilities at Clifford, that we'll see how that shakes out. But broadly, we feel good about where that is. Is that fair?
Yes.
Okay. And then goal three, I think I heard, starting with math, iReady, where we feel very good about where we are in terms of the growth that we've seen so far already and feel pretty good.
I think we've met our, we've met our target, but I think there's still room for growth.
Totally fair. And I would, I would just note, like, I think the LCAP goal is four percentage points increase from spring. And if I'm, I think what I saw was that we started at 27%, jumped like basically doubled, more than doubled.
Yes.
So, that's tremendous growth. Yes, totally agree. More growth, good. But like, that's a, that's a huge jump. So, that's very exciting for me to see.
Yeah.
And then CASP, obviously, we'll, you know, we'll see how that goes. It's one test. I think, speaking for myself, again, growth is frankly the more important metric, but we know that it plays into all these other things. On ELA, I, I think I'm, I didn't quite catch it. Do we have a sense of where that is on the iReady?
The iReady, for, for right now, with what we have, we still have a few students finishing. I think we're about 2% from meeting our goal.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So, still like.
Still a lot of growth since the beginning of the school year, but not quite at our target yet.
Okay. But still, no, no big concerns, you know, goals are there to be goals and we push for them. But broadly seems like we're moving in the right direction so far. Okay.
Yes.
And I pass, I imagine, same sort of picture.
Yeah.
Okay, cool. I mean, that's, that's really the big stuff that I wanted to cover. I will also add, like, I'm, it was, it was so cool to hear about the, sorry, was it PeerTeach program? Because I think it's, obviously, we have a bunch of people who are, a bunch of students who are going to be in different positions. So, it's, I always think it's helpful, right? It's for students to practice a different muscle if they're already pretty far along. So, like, to get that opportunity, that's awesome. So, I'm very excited about that as well.
Great. So are we.
I think the only two other questions I had are the same ones I always ask. And I know you answered it, but I like to put them in bullet. Just one, what, what, what do you think the greatest strengths or supports that you guys have received that have led to the growth in students that you've seen? And then the flip side, what are the biggest challenges and ways that you think that the, the district and the board could help support?
Yeah. I think becoming a community school was a big game changer for Clifford. We have a great staff. We have dedicated teachers. We have very experienced teachers. We have a great program. We have a supportive parent community. But I think coming in, we realized that our Spanish-speaking families, that some of our students and some of those subgroups that weren't making as much progress, that we were missing kind of that connection, that families maybe weren't feeling as comfortable coming to school or they didn't feel as included. And there's a lot of supports that we need working with those families. And becoming a community school has really helped with that. You know, our community school team attends meetings with parents and teachers and conferences. They do translation. They're helping make sure students are getting their basic needs met. And if a student can't get their basic needs met, they're not going to be able to be that successful in school. So, I think the, something that has really helped enrich our program and, and improve outcomes for all students is the fact that we're a part of that community school model and that we're just trying to collaborate as much as possible with that team and our teachers and our whole team. You know, the thing about Clifford is you don't get a lot of people who say, "That's not my job" or "I don't do that." Everybody is willing to help everybody else. Everybody goes all in to do what they need to do for students. And so, I feel that the community school also has helped us make sure that we can do that, that, you know, we can make sure kids are taken care of and that their parents feel safe and they feel welcomed at our school so that we can, you know, provide the support that they need. As far as challenges, you know, Clifford is a big school. We're TK through eight. We have 10 grade levels. We have about 700 kids. We're just a little bit under 700. We have 150 students on IEP is one of the highest in the district. We have a high number of specialized learning centers at our school. And it's just very diverse, right? I mean, we have like, you know, a lot of everything there. So, there's a lot that we have to do. There's a lot of support that's needed. We do the best that we can. We work very, very hard. Casey and I are lucky to have such a wonderful team to support us, but we could use more support. I know that we may not be a Bayside school because we're not located on the Bayside school, but we have 300 students who are unduplicated. That's almost the size of one of our schools on the Bayside. So, I just think Clifford could be prioritized more as far as maybe funding or access to things like summer school or things like that, or additional support services. Having a school with all of those needs requires a lot of management. We have 80 staff members on our site. So, I just think when we're looking at all the schools and taking a look at what makes up those schools, that we just make sure that every school is getting the needed level of support.
Yeah, that's, that's really helpful and totally heard on the diversity of population. I personally think it's helpful to get out, just, the district as a whole represents a wide variety of, of students and schools of population. So, it's, it's really helpful just to hear from each school and representatives, you know, what, what they value and what's super important. So, that's really all I have, but really appreciate everyone showing up for this.
Thank you.
So, again, thank you to everyone. I love the dolphin and the energy that you got, that you brought to this room. It's really nice to, to see all of you here. For, I didn't really write it in, in order, but when we talk about parent engagement, I do appreciate the fact that you guys are using the WhatsApp to communicate with the parents. I love seeing the picture. I figure that was ELAC and so, that was, I think, like 10 or 11 parents. So, that's great to get parents involved. I appreciated the fact that you guys are making it a point to talk to students about the LPAC and how it would affect or can affect them in high school. And I'm just wondering with that, if, are you talking students in general or middle school students?
So, again, most of the students who are in that LTAL category are middle school students. And that's where I spend a lot of my time is up in middle school, the way our campus is. We kind of have two levels and so, I'm sort of up there for a good portion of my time when I'm working at Clifford. And so, those conversations are really one-on-one. They're formal. They're informal. They're frequent. Just keeping it sort of front of mind for those students of what it means. I think some students kind of thought of it more almost like, oh, it's like iReady. And for some students, it's like, okay, let me go through that. And again, our teachers are really trying to tell the students the significance of iReady and this is a good measure for us. It's a way to really celebrate you. We have so many students and their stretch growth on iReady has just been amazing from the fall to the spring. And so, helping them understand just exactly what this is. What is this test that we're asking you to do? Why are you in that situation? What is within your own power to make a change that you have some control and agency over? And so, that's kind of the purpose of those conversations and they've been ongoing throughout the year to support those students. And we're hopeful that those students are able to reclassify this year. And not all of them are long-term English learners. I mean, we were kind of having those conversations with most of our middle schoolers regarding the LPAC.
Okay, great. Thank you. And then another thing, when you guys talked about the attendance awards, I guess, came back. I don't know for how long they were gone. I'm just wondering if for the attendance awards, are you guys giving awards to like those with, let's just say, excellent attendance? Or are you also taking into consideration that there may be kids that are sick and that is why they're not at school? And so, I just wanted to see.
Yeah. When we talked about doing, I don't know about the past, this is our second year at Clifford, but we know that we wanted to make sure that kids understood the importance of attendance. We didn't want to recognize particular students for 100% attendance or something like that because not all the time is it up to the kids whether they come to school or not. Some of it is their parents, right? The attendance award goes to classes that have the best attendance rate for that month. We do different classes. We're not having the same class. We try to spread the wealth on that. It's more just to, so that's in students' minds, the importance of being at school. We do have students who are school avoidant. We are having more and more kids that do not want to come to school for anxiety or one reason or the other. We're seeing an uptick of that. And, you know, sometimes kids are telling parents, "I don't want to go to school. I just want to lay in bed today." And we, we need to make sure that they know that that's not okay, that unless you're sick, and we tell them that, "If you're really sick, please stay home." But we want to try to be at school as much as possible because you could, you could miss something that's very important. So, we're trying not to make it a high-pressure situation where students are feeling bad about themselves or anything like that. We're just trying to bring attention to it and get the kids excited about having an incentive to come to school and come to school as much as they can. Did that answer your question?
Yes, thank you. And then the Mathnasium, I know I wasn't going to pronounce it correctly, Mathnasium tutoring?
Yeah.
Did you say that just started? Was it this year or just recently?
We started that this year. Previous year, we had an advanced math teacher who did part-time math intervention. We didn't have that this year. This year, we just had our part-time advanced math teacher. So, we really didn't have a plan in place other than what was in the classroom for math intervention. And so, when we were brainstorming solutions and taking a look at our funding with our school site council last school year, we, Mathnasium, we're connected to Mathnasium because I think the owners go to our school. And so, they had reached out, said, "Is this something you're interested in?" And so, we took a look at what we could provide and we were able to do that with our budget. We had a budget where we were able to have two 10-week sessions with 30 kids in each session where they got two hours of math intervention a week. And so, that was something that was really great for us to be able to offer. We, at this point in time, we do not have the funding because of the budget cuts to do that next year. What we have said is that we're going to take a look at our carryover for next year. And if we're in a good place with our carryover in our Measure U and some of our other funding areas, I'm not sure the PTO will be able to help, but if we have that available to us, we've told them that we would love to have them back if we can find a way to do it. And, and to add on to that a little bit, you know, we are data-driven as well. And so, we have to look at, did this impact our data? And so, we don't have those results either as we're, as we're making those decisions looking forward. And so, that was another reason to not include in the SIPSA at this time to make sure that the choices we're making with the money we're spending is impactful and meeting the needs and allowing for that growth that we're shooting for, given the data that's being presented to us from our different assessments. Yeah, we didn't have our iReady math results at the time that we had to make those funding decisions. And so, the school site council just didn't feel comfortable at that point, moving forward with a program that we weren't able to see that the data is really showing that it's beneficial.
That was going to be my next question, so I appreciate that. And again, thank you. That was it for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Lovely to see you again.
Yeah.
See you as well. So, it was great that we got a chance to spend time together last week, talking about the school. So, that was, that was great and didn't have to miss me long. On, on Mathnasium, do we have like a date by which we will know confidently about the effect of that intervention and can make decisions about, this is a thing that we generally want to see if we can fund or not?
Well, now that we're getting our iReady data in, yeah, we can take a look at the students that were in the program and the Mathnasium program. I think it still has a few weeks left. And yeah, we can take a look to see how those students performed. Mathnasium does a pre-assessment and a post-assessment, which is great, but we would also like to see how our data is showing. So, that's definitely something that we can look at this year. I don't know if funding will become available, but it's definitely something that we can see to see if it was effective.
Because that has implications beyond just your school, right? If this is something that works generally, it's something we should look at rolling out more generally across the district. Just so we have some idea of cost, like, how much was it?
Mathnasium, I think, was about $28,000. And like I said, we were able to do 60 students. They had a 10-week session, so it was 30 the first session and 30 the next session. And they go twice a week for one hour after school. And so, it's 15 in each session because we have a 3 o'clock to 4 o'clock session, a 4 to 5 session. And we were actually really helpful with our community school team and Ms. Chilton to see what students attend PAL, what students attend NKC, so that we could make sure that they were at school to get there for that intervention. The one thing about after-school is it's a free service provided to parents. So, sometimes it would be like, "Oh, I'm not going to go today. I'm gonna go to my friend's house." And it's like, "No, you need to go this." Or, "We have soccer practice." And we're like, "Okay, so if you're in soccer, maybe this isn't the right intervention." So, we learned some things and I think we, if we are able to do it again next year, I think we could improve it a lot.
Great. I, for one, would be very interested when you have confident data to have you report back that, you know, email or something, just so we can know and discuss it.
Yeah.
Cool. Thank you so much. So, a couple of different quick shout-outs. Peer tutoring, yay! That's definitely a thing of mine. Focusing on growth, absolutely, 100%. WhatsApp for communications, I think that was fantastic. Doing tutoring interventions like Mathnasium, you know, going back to pedagogical research like Bloom's Two Sigma problem, fantastic. And using metacognitive approaches with your long-term English language learners. Those are all like, you know, pet themes of mine. Those are all like, you know, pet themes of mine. And so it's just wonderful to see those play out at your school. Uh, I have an edgy question for you. If summer break
We don't do stripes.
If summer break were shorter, do you think students would experience less learning loss?
Yes, um, I come from, uh, when I first started teaching, I worked at a Title I school that was predominantly English learners, uh, and we had year-round school. Uh, we had a five-week summer and we had uh, more breaks during the school year. Um, and we did feel that there was less uh, learning loss over the summer when students weren't away for so long. We can provide them with tools and resources and books and workbooks and say, do this. Um, but some of our families don't have the opportunity or the time or the means to devote to making sure their students are keeping up over the summer. So I think, yes, if there was a shorter summer, I think we would be in a little bit better of a place.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you again for your presentation. Uh, really appreciate hearing about it. Looking forward to coming out and seeing Clifford. Clifford soon.
Yeah, couple of days.
Um, I'm super, I'm super glad to hear about the um, impact that the community schools are having. I was really glad when we were able to uh, expand that program to more schools. I'm glad that Clifford was the benefit of one and, and hearing about that. Um, and also just how it's targeting families that you know, um, could, could use the extra help. Cause we see it in the math and English data that, you know, different demographics are not seeing the same amount of achievement there. So I was really heartened by the sort of equitable approach that you were taking towards applying some of the interventions and hearing about that here. It takes a lot of work, you know, it takes a lot of work and a lot of focus and a lot of determination. And uh, I just appreciated you talking about it tonight and, and sharing that work. Um, I'll give it to Dr. Baker.
You're mine.
Well, Christine Casey, thanks so much and the great team that's sitting with you. Thank you. Uh, the information uh, that you shared tonight is valuable information. I would like you to take some time to think of when we have the principals meetings, not the one where we're giving information and providing BD, but when it's a principal meeting for yourselves to go ahead and share some of these different types of activities that you and your staff are definitely implementing that are showing that it's making a change for the good. So I want you to think about that and all you have to do is uh, when we set the agenda, plug it in there then how many minutes you want, because some of the items that you mentioned this evening were would be helpful for your colleagues also. Um, the other piece that I felt really positive about was definitely, but you community school and coming, you know, kind of a full circle, it's a little bumpy road starting at the first, but wow, where it has, where it is right now compared to where you started, kudos to both of you and to the staff for leading the charge on that. I really appreciate that. The other piece is um, I will check and see what I can do with the summer school. I know that, I'm not sure if the letters have gone out yet or not. I know Michelle Ramon is in the back. She's shaking her head. Okay, perfect. Um, oh, so we're inviting families. So we need to check with Clifford to see if these are the families that you definitely feel need to come. Uh, we want to make sure that they do get there. There is transportation to get to the program. So I will check in with Anna when she comes back uh, next week. She's at the Kabe Conference with some of your colleagues right now. And so we'll do that.
Thank you.
Um, the other piece is the um, LPAC practice test. Great job. I know we, not we, but I should say we, all of us along with Catherine really pushed that because we figured that children need to understand what's they're being asked to do on that test. And the same with the CASP test, whether you're using the F I A Bs or whether you're using, using some of the um, practice tests that the CASP is giving you. Because I was in a classroom about two weeks ago and one of the fourth grade teachers, she put one of the practice tests from the CASP up on the screen. And she, they just, the kids just tore it apart so they could really understand what it was asking them to do. Because some of those words, if you're, if you have been, you've already RFEPT, but you still have some discomfort with some of the language still, which is noticeable. And we do all experience that myself. Um, it was a, a way in which she taught the kids. You look at these, circle the words that you really are having difficulty understanding. And now let's look at the rest of the sentence and see if we can figure out what that word is really asking you to do. And so um, you doing that along with the staff, I'm looking at Shannon, I'm sure she is. Uh, probably doing a really great job, just like the teacher that I, that I viewed a couple of weeks ago. But thank you for bringing that forward because it's really important because all of us, when we've gone to graduate school, heck, I went and took a, a class on, you know, the GRE, the LSAT when I did it. And because you want to know what you're going to be asked and do you truly comprehend? So um, thank you for all the work you're doing. Appreciate it. And um, Casey, great job with that middle school. I know it has not been easy. Uh, but you, you, you have hung in there and worked with them and made some changes. So I applaud you for that. Thank you so much. And Christie, thank you so much for your leadership.
Thank you.
And group, yay!
All right. I think we, we're going to move on with our agenda. Um, the next is our consent agenda. Uh, we'll pass it all with one vote. So if I can get a motion to.
I move, we approve our consent items.
Second, all right, all in favor?
Hi.
All right. Um, perfect. Thank you again, Clifford Dolphins. Yes, appreciate it. While you're exiting, we'll move on to our next item, uh, which is 11.1. It's the public hearing and adoption of Resolution Number 21. Uh, this is approving the petition for renewal of the charter uh, for Connect Community Charter School. Rick, I think you're going to start. Um, okay.
Our school submitted a petition to the district seeking renewal of its charter for a five-year term from July 1, 2025 through June 30th, 2030. A public hearing regarding the renewal petition was held on January 15th percent to the education code renewal petition process, at which time the board considered the level of support for the renewal petition by teachers, staff and employees, uh, as well as parents and guardians. As part of its comprehensive review of Connect's renewal petition, district staff in consultation with legal counsel identified multiple items where clarification and or revisions to the petition were needed. Connect worked cooperatively with, with the district to provide clarification and implement revisions to the renewal petition to address the identified items. The revised petition reflecting those revisions uh, was attached uh, to the agenda item uh, for full review. Uh, for uh, charter renewals, uh, they're grouped uh, into three categories, uh, depending on academic performance, high performing uh, that can uh, the charter school can be provided with a renewal term of five to seven years. A middle performing charter school with a renewal term of maximum of five years or a low performing uh, charter school with a maximum renewal term of two years. Connect uh, charter school has been designated by the California Department of Education as a middle performing charter school pursuant to Education Code Sections 47607 and 47607 dot two. Middle performing charter school renewals cannot be denied based on academic performance unless the authorizer can make findings of fact. If the charter school has failed to meet or make sufficient progress towards meeting standards that provide a benefit to the pupils of the school and that closure of the charter school is in the best interest of students. Staff considered Connect's performance on a school-wide basis and among all subgroups served by the charter school as identified on the California dashboard as and determined that the charter school meets the minimum eligibility requirements for renewal as a middle performing charter school. Therefore, district staff recommends that the board approve the renewal of Connect Charter as has been revised for a new five-year term. Uh, the district will be working uh, with Connect on the updated Oversight and Obligations Memorandum of Understanding outlining the party's respective fiscal and administrative responsibilities and legal relationship regarding Connect's operations. The MOU term will, term will align with the renewal term and will be brought to the board for ratification at a future meeting. Representatives from uh, Connect Charter School are present uh, and wish to address the board regarding the renewal petition. Uh, they will give in a few minutes to speak. Haley, if you'd like to come up and speak.
All right. Hi. All right. Um, I just had very short remarks and I wrote them down, so uh, forgive me for reading. I, I just want to say good evening and thank you for your time and consideration of our charter. I am really appreciative of our ongoing partnership. I've been involved with Connect since the beginning and I am so dedicated to Connect uh, to its vision and mission, but our school would not be uh, thriving as it is without the efforts and commitment of everyone. So I wanted to also thank my staff and teachers and parents and graduates, community, all our partners, including the district. Um, it is truly the culmination of my long career in education to be able to lead this phenomenal staff. Um, I have such a committed team of professionals. They're dedicated to high expectations and successful, successful outcomes for our students. Uh, and I really believe in the future of Connect. Uh, while we still have growth to make in bringing everyone up to gray level, I see tremendous progress in our students, not just academically, but in their confidence, in their engagement and in their curiosity. So it's been really a treat to see the growth we've made the, over the last couple of years. I'm excited to imagine a future of continuing our work at Connect and look forward to growing our partnership with the district to ensure positive outcomes for all of our students. So thank you very much. And if you have any questions for me, I hopefully can answer.
All right. So I think now we'll start, open the public hearing. Okay, perfect. Then um, so we're doing this in two parts, right? We'll have a public hearing. We'll hear public comment as it comes in. When that's done, then we can have our discussion. If there's anything discussed, I opened the public hearing on this um, adoption of Resolution Number 21, approving the petition of renewal of the charter for Connect Community Charter School, and it is 8:22.
I don't think anybody put in speaker cards for this evening. We weren't sure what to expect, so.
Fine. We, we got to hear a lot the last time at our 15th one. So if there's no more public comment, then I will close the public hearing at approximately 23.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, okay. So now that it's closed, trustees, do you have any um, comments or questions uh, for Haley, for Rick, for anyone on this?
I've just been very impressed by the cooperation between Connect and the district. I've been over a couple of times and um, I think we've got a lot to learn from each other. So.
Questions, comments?
Um, I guess keep on doing what you're doing. Um, I appreciate again the collaboration and your efforts to come in and you, you know, present to us even not just for the petition, but um, our prior um, board meeting. So thank you.
I was going to save this for a different section, but uh, I, I visited, I had the opportunity to visit Connect uh, last week. Um, so that was very helpful for me, see, and I appreciate you taking the time to show me around as, yeah, I think consistent with what I've heard here, which is, is really helpful to, to see all the work in the community that you've built there uh, and engagement that all the students and staff had. So thank you.
No further questions, comments? Uh, thank you. Um, yeah, I think we're uh, um, seems like this should go forward. So uh, does anyone have, want to make a motion? It's an action item.
I would like to move that we approve this charter. Resolution 21.
Yeah, resolution. Yep.
Sure.
One second. Okay, all in favor? Hi. Hi. All right. Thank you.
Absolutely.
All right. Um, now we're on to 11.2, which is the approval for the purchase and installation of the new combi ovens and braising pans for the CNS program. Um, I believe that Richie has a presentation and we do have one speaker for this, so we'll take it after the presentation.
My name is Richie Willam, our director of CMS. Uh, he did an overview on the purchase of new equipment for each of our school site kitchens.
Hello, board and cabinet. Thank you for your time. Next slide, please. So what this project is that, that we're bringing together is the introduction of new equipment into our kitchens. Um, as a rough idea, those pictures on the right show different types of cooking vessels and techniques and things. The purchase of the new equipment using our kit funds, which stand for Kitchen Infrastructure and Training Funds, will um, accommodate all of those different cooking techniques in a much smaller footprint. So as we're not looking or able to knock down walls and things, we're able to do a lot more with a limited space. Next slide, please. Um, the overview of the equipment is the brand of the combi ovens are called Convoterm. They're manufactured in Germany. Um, they're very high uh, productivity and very industrial-grade equipment with a very solid reputation. And when you break down a combination oven, it's the ability to use it as a steamer. So we can use that for steaming rice, vegetables, keeping vital nutrients and, and minerals in, in the food itself. We can use it as a convection oven to do our baking and things and, or a combination of both, which creates a, a really kind of magical environment where you can introduce steam while roasting chicken and things to keep proteins really nice. The Ivario braising pans are multifunctional pans and we currently don't have any large format areas where we can make soups or sauces or even boil pasta for that matter. Um, it has a very precise control so that you can heat up like creams and things without scalding or burning them. It also has a drain built in so that for safety reasons, our staff won't be lifting heavy pots and pans when it comes to cooking pasta. Next slide, please. Um, the features of the combi ovens, as I mentioned, are steaming, ideal for vegetables, rice. We can even use it to steam fresh eggs and things in the morning. Again, it's a very delicate and neutral way to cook food so that the food tastes exactly how you'd like it to taste. Convection baking is perfect for anything you could imagine. Um, using the fan speed to um, have a really like powerful cooking environment, but also you can dial down the fan if you want to create like a more gentle environment. And then combination cooking, as I mentioned, allows for both steam and convection. So that enhances the cooking efficiency and the quality of the product overall. That keeps the integrity of the food and that means juicy chicken and proteins and bright and flavorful vegetables. Next slide, please. Um, features of the Ivario braising pans are the ability now we can use them as a flat top. Um, I have an amazing pancake recipe. We can now use that to make whole grain pancakes for, for breakfast. We can now sear grilled cheese, sear chicken breasts, things like that. Um, boiling, as I mentioned, for boiling pasta and other ingredients. And there's also an auto lift feature that safely lifts out the basket. So that, again, the staff's not lifting heavy pots and pans. Soup preparation, we can, it's perfect for making soups and stews and things too. Depending on the season or time of year, it just screams versatility of what we're going to be able to put on our menus. Precision is fully programmable. Uh, it's incredibly accurate and precise. So it's also very safe when we're cooking certain foods to certain temperatures to make sure that they're heated and cooked thoroughly and properly and then served really well. Um, safety, as I mentioned, you know, with the, the usability, it's really designed for the person that's using it in mind. And then training and support, which is a huge component of going with these brands, is there's local support that is, is ongoing. And I've used this with some of our other vendors that we talk about. We need them to be an extension of our program. What we're doing is massive feeding, you know, potentially six, 6,500 plus students. So anyone that we want to work with or partner with needs to be an extension of us and offer that training and support. Next slide, please. Enhancements in kitchen technology. So this is a massive upgrade for the school district, but believe it or not, this technology has been around for over 50 years, introducing steam and while cooking, um, super popular in Europe. But this is the way now with the precision and the controllability, it's going to make a really big difference in our program and the food. Next slide, please. Um, safety improvements, as I touched on earlier, the better insulation on the equipment. With the old equipment we have, the outside gets really hot. Um, you know, if staff's not careful and then some of our kitchens that are small, even bumping into one of those could result in a burn. With the technology and the, the manufacturing of this equipment, even at 500 degrees, you can put your bare hand on the outside of the equipment. Advanced programming, think of it just as your smartphone. You know, there will be probably a little learning curve. I don't want to say it's easy because it's new and but it does allow for that precision and programmability that you want to see. Another really good perk that probably the team will appreciate the most is the self-cleaning feature. So to be able to cook food really well and not have flavor transfer and have a better cooking environment, it's nice to have a clean, clean piece of equipment to work with. And the chemicals are very safe. They actually neutralize one another and become inert when they go under the drain. So they're safe for the environment as well. Next slide, please. Financial overview of this project is, it's a large dollar amount, but it's a small part of our program. I want to emphasize that this is also to support our staff, the ones that are in the field, in the nitty gritty every day doing the work. The total cost, including the purchase of the equipment and installation, is one million forty-one thousand, two hundred and eighty-three dollars and fifty-two cents. This will be all funded through our kit funds. The funds need to be encumbered by the end of the school year. And this was a great opportunity and very much needed for our program. New resources, as I also mentioned, are the training, service and technical questions. Again, referencing the extension of our program. This is now building our network and we also have training resources from other school districts that currently use the same equipment that will come in. And they're part of the included in the package and being a part of this brand that will work with our team directly to make sure that they're fully comfortable using the equipment. Thank you.
Outstanding. Thank you. We do have one speaker on this on Zoom. And so at this time I'll call Jessica Shade.
Hey, everyone. Can you all hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
Great. Okay, I am really excited about these combi ovens. It seems like they're going to offer a lot of versatility for our kitchens that are in dire need of updates and support for our fantastic, hardworking kitchen staff. I also know that Richie has been applying for grants to support our kitchen infrastructure improvement, like these kit funds. And I just want to say how much I appreciate that. I was on the facilities master plan meeting yesterday and there was a comment about if we could leverage grants to increase Measure S funds impact. And I think this is a great example of how Richie's been thinking strategically about how to piece together funds to start filling the many needs of our district kitchens. So thanks, Richie, for getting creative to support our students.
All right. Thanks, Jessica. Does anyone have questions or comments for Richie?
Thank you. I appreciate your leadership and justice, Jessica. I figure a lot of other parents are going to be very excited to see this moving forward if we agree on this tonight. I really appreciate the fact that you're thinking of obviously the employees that to lift and the equipment to help with the cleaning of the equipment. So I really appreciate it. So that was my only comment.
It's expensive, but it also seems pretty thoughtfully considered. Also, now I'm hungry. Thank you.
Yeah, this is great. And thank you for answering my question offline. I was, I had asked about what the participation uptake has been happening since we started self-op. And you said it was about ten percent increase in participation. And I imagine that even improving the equipment and the quality of the food is really gonna continue to see that grow. So that's really exciting. I mean, it just seems like this is a smart upgrade. You know, it's really student focused investment. It's for the safety and sustainability for the staff, the, you know, the hardworking CNS staff. And it doesn't touch the general fund. So bonus. I think that's, you know, but that's really important. And I'm really, you know, I definitely want to acknowledge just the whole transparency in the vendor selection and the board memo that you put together and the process there, you know, that level of diligence, it just really helps maintain community trust. Here, I thought it was done very well. You got it really well on some of the other ones where you have the rubric for picking our food vendors. And so I just want to acknowledge that diligence and because it's, you know, again, wins for student health, but wins for fiscal responsibility too. It's nice to have that double win. And that's it. I think, did you have any questions?
Just thank you. Thank you so much, Richie. And then for your efforts of also when we had the Spanish superintendent said, rise in meeting, you brought in some breakfast food and talked to them about nutrition and so forth. And this is what we're serving our kids now. So I applaud you. Thank you.
Cool. Thank you. This is an action item, so I need a motion to approve.
I move that we approve the purchase and installation of the ovens and braising pans for the program.
Seconded. All in favor? Hi. Great. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Now we're on to eleven point three. This is the approval of the twenty-four, twenty-five second interim budget report. How about Rick?
Good evening, board members, committee members and those in the audience still. It's red. Can you hear me? Something's happening. Good evening again. Tonight, as part of our regularly scheduled annual reports, is the presentation of the second interim budget presentation for Redwood City School District. And as always, we'll go through a couple of routine slides for everyone viewing from home to be caught up as well. Tonight, circled in green is our second interim report, which on this slide shows it's the seventh step in the annual process for the budget. We'll quickly transition now into budget development, LCAP development. Waiting for the governor's May revision to see if there's any impacts to Redwood City Schools. And then present both the LCAP and the budget for the public hearing and subsequent adoption in June. Education code forty-two, one, three, zero requires semi-annual reports to the board, ultimately being sent to the county office and to the CDE for the first interim, which covers fiscal year expenditures, July one through October thirty-one. Second interim report, which is July one through January thirty-one. And at each of these two reports, the first interim and second interim, the district self-certifies as either positive, qualified or negative. And on the next slide is a brief overview of each of those certifications. Once again, the cream check mark gives away the ending of this presentation. But we will be certifying as positive for our second interim report upon approval tonight. Simply mean that we feel that we can meet our financial obligations in the current fiscal year and our two subsequent years. Qualified means we may not be able to and negative would mean that we feel that we will not be able to meet them. So at this point in time of the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year, we are certifying positive stating that we will meet our financial obligations. As we dive into some numbers for the second interim, these are the budget assumptions that we used at second interim and they have been updated slightly with any new information that we have from first interim. It goes into primarily the LCFF calculator for the current year. And then taking into account our two out years in the multi-year projection with the associated increases based on the percentages shown in the table. Going into Fund One is also commonly referred to as our general fund. It is our general operating fund for the school district. As of second interim, you can see we increased by about nine hundred and thirty thousand dollars of anticipated revenue over first interim, primarily due to our charter school enrollment and their projected enrollment over the course of the years. Finalizing our, what we believe to be our finalization of property taxes. And then some small other revenues that came in during that time period. If we look at the breakdown of revenue by category, you can see by percentage where the majority or any of our money comes from for those revenue sources with about fifty-seven percent coming from the base fund, which is funded by our local property taxes. Here is a graph representation showing the breakdown by percentage. And for those watching, I tilted the table this, just to be a little more creative. I probably won't use it next time, but I wanted to try it this time. On this slide, we're showing our expenditures updated from adopted budget through first interim through second interim. And you, here you can see about three point seven million dollar increase in expenditures primarily related to services and operating expenses with an increase of three point five nine one million. And that's primarily due to the encumbrance or expenditure of restricted funds that we had already received revenue for previously, but hadn't committed to any project, service or person until this point. There was also some large expenditures for insurance for AB two eighteen, the law that for sexual abuse and molestation that was reintroduced or extended several years back that we're still paying premiums on for cases that may happen. And then we also had a large, not increase, but our annual bill for legal expenses came into from the county that contributed to that increase. So here is a breakdown of expenditures by percentage. And if you add up the top three, which will be on the next slide as well, roughly seventy-six percent of our expenditures are for classified, certificated salaries and the associated benefits for both of those employee groups. Here's a breakdown of expenditures, color coded to the legend on the right, showing what generally makes up those categories. And as I mentioned, about seventy-six percent of our expenditures are for personnel or personnel related costs. Here is the snapshot showing our inputs from revenue and our outputs for expenditures, signifying our hundred and fifty-five point one million dollar operating budget for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. This slide is really the legend for the next slide. And I know becoming familiar to the board as we're showing this on every presentation now. These are the general types of expenditures by color category and broken into a little bit, a little different methodology than on the previous slide, where we're actually trying to group some of the key components such as teacher and classroom support salaries. That would include both classified and certificated employees who work directly with students in the classroom and then broken down by the other groups as shown on this slide. Bringing that to this slide, calling out just expenditures now, breaking down those expenditures by those groups on the previous slide. And then we do break out the bottom one for what are considered our five thousands or contracted and other operating services. In between, services provided to students or on behalf of students compared to the amount of money that's therefore turning on the lights and paying the normal bills such as trash or even some legal fees and other contracts that keep the district operating, but not necessarily with students on a daily basis. But because of students, we need those services. Looking at the components of the ending fund balance, you can see with the updated second interim, we have decreased our ending fund by about two point seven million dollars primarily because of the increase that we showed on the contracted services in the five thousand series on expenditures. But still with that and our starting balance, still being able to certify as positive and still being able to meet our minimum requirement, minimum reserve for economic uncertainty. Going into the multi-year projections, this shows our current year twenty-four, twenty-five and the two out years that were required to report on. This is a, I'll call it the small version of MRP where we have combined unrestricted and restricted revenues into a single column. On the board agenda item, there is the long form multi-year projection as well that you look at if you can want to see the difference between restricted and unrestricted. On this though, it shows the numbers that we talked about for twenty-four, twenty-five and then the projections based on the best information we have at this time and the assumptions that we showed at the beginning of the presentation. The components of the ending fund balance on the MYP show that in each of our years, the current year plus the two out years, we are able to meet the minimum reserve for economic uncertainty of three percent. Thus being able to certify positive at second interim. On slide eighteen, these are our projected ending fund balances for our other funds that we routinely report on to the board. Fund twelve, thirteen, fourteen, twenty-one, twenty-five, thirty-five and forty. You'll see, you know, Fund Twenty-One, there's going to be a big difference this year as projects start going. We've encumbered millions of dollars today with expenditures to follow, especially with the HVAC projects that are, we're finalizing bidding this week on those as well as the lighting projects that's slated to kick off over spring break. So just a week and a half away and the project will start. The county facilities fund, Fund Thirty-Five with a minus thirteen million, that's also for solar, for our schools with a kickoff on that anticipated in late August or September for construction to begin on that. So we're seeing some movement in those other funds now that we haven't seen for a while because projects are starting to roll with our Measure S general obligation bond and also the conclusion of our Measure T general obligation bond. Another thing I'll point out, and Richie's already left, our cafeteria fund is using a lot more money these days as they've depleted some of their reserve as we're making that change to scratch cooking or modified scratch cooking or light scratch cooking. As the board has approved, I think, seven food contracts now, six or seven food contracts where we're bringing and we're sourcing our own food now. So we are going to see some increase in costs, but we're also going to see a decrease in merit fees, et cetera, where we're still projecting CNS to be a fully self-funded program as well. And not, as President Wells said, there's no money coming from the general fund to support the CNS program. And to that point with the increase of ten percent, Richie, and I're looking at that on at least a monthly basis, looking at year-over-year participation and asking questions about how we can make that number go even higher. We have high participation at some sites, low participation at other sites. And when you average it all out, you know, we're only at about fifty or fifty-two percent of the students district wide are utilizing a food program. So we're doing quite well fiscally with what's happening now with participation, but we have a lot of room that we can grow. And investments like the one we made tonight will certainly help that with different kinds of foods and higher quality foods as well. So maybe a bit more of an update on Fund Thirteen than we've given in the past, but I wanted to take the opportunity and give a lot of credit to Richie for what he's doing with that program. So as we go through this areas to monitor, we're still in active negotiations with both our CTA and CSEA state and federal budgets, as well as funding uncertainty. That has been a topic of discussion in many different rooms of what's going to happen and what could happen, what might happen, what's not likely to happen. Of course, we have rising costs and liabilities on an annual basis. Still, as we do every year, closely monitoring enrollment and making sure we have the appropriate staffing for the amount of students we have and the amount of students we need to serve in different ways. And then ensuring our facility operational needs are met on a continual basis. And since mine's here, I'll give a lot of credit to Martin for the work that he's doing with the facilities and MNO team and utilizing the funds that they have to make the facilities or sites better on a daily basis. Next steps, I've kind of gone over these in brief through the time period. Negotiations are continuing. Budget and LCAP development has already started. We also have the great opportunity this year, along with our friends in HR department to implement a new enterprise system ERP to replace our current financial system, which will go live on July one. So, and we're now done, yeah, whether we're ready or not, we're double booking everything right now. So we'll be creating a budget in two different systems. We'll be creating everything in two systems right now. So if some of our employees in HR and fiscal get a little cranky, Uh, if uh some of our employees in H R and fiscal get a little cranky over the next couple of months. Please give them a little bit of a break knowing what's going on. Uh, and then in June, as I mentioned, we'll be bringing uh to the board. Uh, for public hearing, the the proposed uh LCAP and budget. Uh, and subsequently bringing that back, uh, right now, I believe at the last meeting in June for approval of both of those documents, uh, which will conclude this fiscal year. Uh, in this reporting cycle and we get to start it all back up again in August, so that I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, thanks, Rick. Um, you and your and the business office, of course, for putting together, you know, the thorough, transparent second interim. Um, does anyone have questions or comments for it?
Yeah, I've got a quick one. I'm probably just misreading this, but the slide six showed second interim uh twenty-four, twenty-five total revenues of a little over a hundred and thirty-four million.
Yes.
Yeah, and then I take a look at sl- uh, the multi-year projection, slide sixteen. Um, and this is showing total revenues of a hundred and forty-two million.
That's because we on slide six, we don't show the transfer in on the multi-year, we show the transfer in.
Got it, okay. Got it, thank you.
I think. No, I don't have it in here. The uh transfer in comes on a lower slide that's in the book for sure.
Got it, it's just.
Any other, any other questions or comments? Um, it's important to call out that transfer in because it's great that we're community, you know, community funded and that we're positive. Uh, certification here, but you know, we are continuing to deficit spend and so that'll of course take some uh. You know, commitment to be able to figure out how to how to address that in the future. Um, but again, thank you to you and your team for putting this presentation together, uh, putting together the budget book in the second interim and getting us to the positive qualification. Dr. Baker?
No.
No, okay. Uh, so this is an action item. Do I have a motion to approve?
I move we approve the second interim budget.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Outstanding. Um, through all our stuff to do, uh, it's born superintendent's report. Uh, does anybody have anything to report?
Cool things I attended, I mentioned I went to connect, that was great, very helpful visit. Um, also went to a familia who need us class, which was really interesting to see. I know that they're very supportive of same students that we serve, obviously in a different context, but a a important and large um subpopulation. Uh, but it was great, uh, if you guys haven't just to kind of observe it, I will acknowledge that I uh I revealed my rustiness in Spanish there, but it's still worthwhile to see all the. The amount of of learning, which is like both reading English and Spanish across grade levels, different types, and then also. Um, math and growth mindset, so that was um, that was great for me to see. And then separately, uh, with trustee weekly, we both attended the legislative brunch with that was hosted by Samu Taylor County. Board Association, uh, which was, uh, I think really interesting is first and foremost good to connect with. Uh, other of our colleagues within the county as well as the county office of education board members. It's also helpful to. Uh, hear what the thoughts were and kind of the awareness from the federal uh and state legislators that represent our county. Um, my my general takeaway was that there's. Um, there's an openness from them, from our representatives to um really think about education. I really appreciate that they, you know, came and. Talked to us and we're open to hearing things. Uh, but I also think that there's, I feel like there's a really, there's a, there's a great growth opportunity for us to um. Advocate, um, to, you know, make known like the different issues that we as Redwood City are seeing in education, things that could be helpful. Obviously budget, um, funding, funding, which is kind of statewide. Um, but uh, I don't know what that's going to look like, but I I thought it was a great opportunity, but there's, there's room there.
Um, I attended the Redwood City together along with Dr. Baker, um, which is great, you know, again, um, community engagement. Um, definitely all the community-based um organizations that are part of Redwood City together are just doing a really awesome job. Um, and of course, um, Rafael Agudainio, who was the executive director. I also attended the Oye Latinx Conference. Um, it was the thirteenth annual and um, I don't know the number exactly, but it was anywhere between four to five hundred students that showed up. Um, President uh Wells was there volunteering, so I appreciate your uh volun- uh volunteer work. Um, it was, it was great to see a lot of um students with their parents or without their parents with. Chevron's had a lot of resources this year. They um had a um. The Oye Fest, which was new this year, um, and we didn't know how it was going to go, but it was actually very smooth. Uh, a lot of, had a lot of resource tables. Uh, lots of workshops that, you know, students can join. Um, it was just a great event. Um, I also went to D LAC at Garfield. And I um went to the webinar yesterday for the facility master plan too. And that's it for me.
Legislative brunch, that was great. Uh, David Lee covered that very well. I also did a school site visit at Clifford, uh, as I mentioned, so I got to. Sit down uh for about two hours, kind of going through a lot of what's going on there. I wrote up a bunch of notes and sent that onward to Dr. Baker.
Awesome. I'm glad you two made it to the legislative brunch. We couldn't make it because we were at the Oye Festival, but uh it was, we got it covered. Um, yeah, divide and conquer. That's good. Um, last party was our, was climate committee. Um, most of them was mostly dedicated to topics related to special education. Um, and Dr. Mahaland joined the meeting as well, so it felt like a pretty good conversation. Visiting Roosevelt was the, my first time visiting since it's um, has no more middle school, so it was interesting to see it in that form. And I was thinking about it when um either Christie or Casey was talking about the um T C M uh uh P D. Because they liked it so much at Roosevelt, they've site-funded TK through two as well. Um, so I don't know, I, it sounds like positive feedback all the time about that, um, P D. Um, I visited North Star as well. Uh, it was, seems to be doing well. Um, we had an employee workforce housing meeting. I think there's a closed session next week. I don't. It's coming up. Uh, we'll have a, yeah, we'll get it, we'll get an update on on how that's going. Uh, and then I was on the webinar last night too for the facility master plan. Thank you, Rick. Um, and then it was Erin and Hector were the. Maybe there was one other person that did a presentation too, but yeah, yeah. Um, if you get a chance to go, probably do the live ones. Um, it's pretty neat to see all how they're thinking about all the sites and what the, what the potential upgrades are for. Don't get your hopes up. It's like way more than um can possibly get funded, but it's still, uh, it's still really neat to see like. How they're tastefully thinking about the work that had already been done through measure T. Um, and you know, where where there are opportunities to um, you know, improve like pretty much all the campuses.
Went to the superintendent's meeting on Friday, which was quite interesting as the attorneys were going through the different. Executive orders and just saying, hold on, we don't know what to tell you, you know, their executive orders are not laws, so. Just hold on and when we know, we'll let you know. Uh, so that was interesting. Oh, even though superintendents were asking all these questions in this scenario and that scenario, they go, don't know what to tell you, so it was a bit um. Disappointing that we're going through this process at this point in time and feel like we're kind of in limbo, but we're not alone, you know. Um, it's not only us here on the peninsula, it's, you know, statewide, stateswide, I should say. So that was a uh superintendent's meeting along with some other items that I'm going to talk about with you individually about what's up that we need to be careful about. Uh, and I will say that uh in in private with each of you. Um, I still need to talk to my staff about it because I don't know a whole lot about it myself and I asked our attorney to get me more information. With that system that is out and about that everyone uses, but um seems that other forces have access to it. Uh, also attended a meeting today for A B three-two-one-six, which is the phone-free. School Act and you know how we have to have a cell phone policy, start determining um that what the policy is going to look like, how it's going to. How we're going to roll it out, we're going to get stakeholder and um. Stakeholders to come to an agreement with all of us and give their perspectives of how they feel it should look at a school site. You need to have parents, you need to have staff, you need to have um community members that are at a school site. And so what we asked the county to do, because they have two consultants that are working with them. Is to please give us as much information as they have at this point in time with other counties and states that have already started this and have put. Policies and protocols into place. We also wanted to see what these stakeholder conveniences looked like and um. As we move through this process, uh, we can, instead of us each creating our own policy, because C S B A does not really have a policy yet. I don't know. I have no idea.
It seems like this is playing up their valley, like, give us a pause.
And and s- there's, there's a bill and and so. The state has given direction, the state has given direction, and so we're following that direction. But we don't each want to be reinventing the wheel and those of us, because we are a school district that feeds into a high school district. Would like to kind of mirror, you know, what's let us start and um mirror what we're doing, so there's no disconnect when the kids move on to this high school. School district, so um. A lot of work to be done on that and as soon as I get the information that was presented today, I'm going to share it with Wendy so we can start working on it. And start determining a timeline for these stakeholder meetings. We have to include the kids also. Uh, so that that's a piece that will be new.
And those will include like the, because all the sites kind of have their own rules, so we'll get to, even today, the Clifford, I just looked back at their presentation, they talked about yonder patches. We didn't ask about it, but.
Right, 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 yeah. And and the superintendents that were on the media day, some are using yonder pack. Uh, pad, what, houses, and then others are using these little. Plastic see-through Ziploc, it was like a Ziploc baggie to me because they didn't want to get so intense with this, with the yonder pouch. And so, so right now, school districts are kind of all over the place. So this is a group that's going to kind of bring Samu Taylor County together to move in a direction where we don't all have to do our own individual thing.
Can't we also in parallel with that yell at C S B A to offer some more guidance?
You, you are all members. It would look good for the superintendent to do that, but board members could definitely do that.
Advocate, thank you.
That's it for me.
All right, great. Our next is uh informational items. I don't know if anyone had any questions about the county investment fund. For February, uh, three-point-nine percent, something like that, sounds great, okay. Um, correspondence? I have a couple. Um, so I definitely wanted to share. One is just a a a lettered copy of an email we all received about parking in the Clifford neighborhood.
And you all got.
Yeah, he's not the response. Um, but then also, uh, Mrs. Minor at North Star, her garden club wrote us all letters. Um, and they're beautiful. Uh, and they're, they're beautiful pictures and they're, some of them are written out. It's uh. I mean, I'm gonna, I'm gonna loan them to each of you to look at it going home, but uh, you know, it's beautiful artwork with. Hurtfelt messages from the students about their happiness with like they want a garden, they want to make sure every school has a garden. And that they have some native oak saplings, I think that they'd be willing to donate if uh people are there, if I got that right, so. Yeah, um, I got some, we're here and I fixed them up while I was there, so. Thought I'd share my correspondence, my correspondence to share, so I'm excited. Um. Anyone, anyone, can anyone top that?
Um, I got one email about a question about school boundaries, which Superintendent Baker um gracefully responded to, so thank you for that. Um, w- one other reminder, I believe, uh, Samu Taylor County School Boards Association is calling for uh nominations for representation. If folks are interested, I think those are due on the thirty-first, so just putting that out there. Um, and then I think we all received the email about sibling priority at North, North Star Academy as a potential topic.
All right, next up is possible other business um and suggested agenda items. I think this is where I um ask about our self-evaluation. I think Evelyn, what we'll do is, I talked to Dr. Baker, it sounds like we're probably going to do an off-site retreat kind of thing in in sometime in August, September. We haven't had that scheduled yet. And maybe what we'll do is we'll just um review the board evaluation at that time instead of trying to do a study session in June. Does that work for everyone? Yeah.
I had one other suggestion.
Okay.
Um, trustee King and I met with uh Superintendent Baker and Anna earlier this week, I think. Uh, just to get a kind of a primer on some of the academic pieces of things, how they work. Um, I was truly just. Putting it out there as a potential topic because I found it super helpful. Um, and I I just wonder if it'd be a, like a study session topic for a broader group of us to. Talk through and part of me is thinking about a lot of the presentations because I know that. We've been where I, I, I think others have, we've, we've all collectively been pushing to change um or to get some clarity and crispness on. Some of the data that's presented on the academic side of the presentations and I wonder if it'd be helpful to just like talk through it so we're all on the same page of. What we're seeing and what would be helpful, but just a thought.
We also done that at off, at an offsite too. That's how we did. That's how we did it previously, um, and how we came up with what we're utilizing now. So if we can do that again, we, well, we're welcome to do it.
Yeah. Combine these two things that we just.
Yeah, 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 I think so. I mean, usually the offsites are like three or four hours, um, and. Yeah. So.
Longer, cool.
Great. Um, any changes to the board meetings calendar?
Uh, just the closed session on the second, six fourteen.
Six fifteen, everybody have that on their calendar. Great. Um, okay, we're at the adjournment. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
All in favor? Aye, all right, we're adjourned.